Good evening and welcome to tonight's special meeting of the Board of Education. The special meeting is called to vote on resolutions to put two particular millages on a May election for a sinking fund and for a technology bond. To start the order of business, Mr. Secretary, can you call the roll?
Sure. President Wasserman?
Here.
Vice President Baker?
Here.
Secretary Kaminsky, I'm here. Treasurer Branstad?
Here.
Member Gordon? She's absent. Member McFarland?
Here.
Member Vanderkellen?
Here.
We have six of seven, hence a quorum.
There's Yvonne.
And we have seven of seven.
Yvonne, sit here. Ms. Gordon?
Are you present?
Are you present?
Here.
All right. Get it good. At this point, we'll move into presentations to the board. We have no formal request to speak. If anybody would like to speak, they're more than welcome to. Seeing none, we'll move into Board of Education matters and presentations of the board, and I'll hand it over to Mr. Allinger.
Yeah, we have, I think, an interesting PowerPoint for you to view tonight that addresses really some planning that's been ongoing in the district for a number of years relative to our technology plan and preparation for, I think, the board to have a little bigger picture of why we have the need for, in particular, this sinking fund. So we've asked our tech department and Mr. Valendi, who provides the direct oversight for that, to present that to the board prior to taking action on the recommended resolutions.
Thank you. We're going to organize around a few questions and then give you a general overview at the end before you bring the proposal to some kind of vote. So what we have is a few technology questions that have come up and we'll give you the answers. Does middle and public schools have a plan for technology? Yes. You will remember last spring, we brought to you the next installment of a three-year plan, which we have to do every three years. We may do it more often than that because it is a living document, and believe it or not, technology does change within three years, so we need to make those changes. But the reality is that our technology plan goes back to 1992. None of you were around, maybe a few you were involved in strategic planning, but that was actually the first technology plan that was established. It was not required by the state, but it was part of that whole strategic planning process. And then, in 1997, we were required by the state to do a formal plan according to their guidelines, including their specific information, and we needed to do that on a three-year cycle, but could do it in shorter cycles if the need arose. And the plans are reviewed annually by the district to ensure progress towards meeting our goals. In fact, if you take a look within the document that is the most current technology plan, it really is very similar to many of the technology plans before that, in that some of the plans change, some of the devices change, some of the funding changes, which impacts some of the implementation timelines that we might aim for, but the vision remains the same, and the acknowledgement that this is a living document has always remained the same. It's how we get to that that might change. But in the technology plan for many years, it has been the vision of the middle and public schools, that use of technology becomes part of the educational culture, so that students are prepared to reach their post-graduation goals, and so teachers, staff, and administrators are able to meet the needs of today's students. And with this caveat, a technology vision must change currently, constantly, to keep up with the advances that are occurring at an ever-increasing pace. For this reason, the middle and public schools evaluates and revises this vision regularly so our students and staff do not fall behind. So we have an annual review process. We do have a process for updating those plans, and over the course of these many years through 19-- from 1997, we have involved a wide variety of groups to be part of that crafting of the plan to get to the vision. Associate superintendents, coordinators, teachers, technology and information system managers, principals, assistant principals, community members. I know going way back, I've been involved in this committee in some of these very, very different capacities over the years. So it is a standard process for doing this. Step one, the committee is formed to review and make modifications to the plan. The plan is then presented to the Board of Education for approval. Actually, the approval has to go through step three and four, but we bring it to the board because I think you probably need to weigh in on that. And the plan is submitted to the ESA for approval by the state's mandates, and then that plan is submitted by the ESA to the MDE for final approval. And all our plans have been approved over the years. As we go forward, if we were able to have a tech bond proposal, that will change the way of reaching the vision, which means we will say, no, this plan, which we currently have in the context of capital outlay and the order of about $750,000 a year from the general fund, may change, and we may be able to reach those goals in new ways, better ways, and be able to do it in a more expeditious manner and reach more kids on a daily basis. So we've already begun scoping that out. We've had conversations with stakeholders. We have people who volunteer that they will be part of putting this together after May 7th, and if we know that the steps to that need to be changed. What you need to understand is the total picture of all that goes into this plan. This isn't just about how much money it's going to cost, which device is this, what year does this happen, what year does this happen. This is a broader vision, not design per se. It is more about the total picture of making your vision a reality. You have an executive summary, visions and goals, student achievement data that you're aiming for, technology delivery, community relations, collaboration, professional development, which is going to be a big part of this, supporting resources, what's the shape of your infrastructure, what changes you need to make there, technical support, how are you going to increase access over the coming years, timetables and total costs are included, and coordination of the resources, how you monitor and evaluate, and acceptable use policy, any changes. We have an acceptable use policy. We will need to make some changes, which we've been scoping out already in the context of a one-to-one initiative. So, technology is really something that has been a vision. Technology changes. Our needs change, our funding change, and we try to constantly reevaluate that plan and are already scoping out that in the context of if there is a bond proposal and if it passes, we will then not say we're going to go on with this three-year plan. We will go through, filling out all these sections so that it meets exactly the vision that this tech bond proposal tries to encompass. I'm not getting the next slide. There we go. How far will the $20.8 million go? Legitimate question. Okay, what we've aimed for right from the very beginning is sustainability, because we know how quickly things change. You look back four or five years ago, what was a tablet? Okay? Things do change, and if we're trying to build sustainability over a course of time and you don't know what it is, you want to make sure that you are prepared to keep our students up to date, plan for that right from the beginning, and it also can help with your planning on general fund then in the context of removing some pressures from the general fund into this tech bond and make appropriate budget decisions from then. You need to understand that the way that this has been planned out with the help of our financial advisors is that there'll be two issuances of bonds, not do the bonds at the beginning, okay, you've got that money, and we'll see you in 10 years. Okay? This is an issuance at the beginning, over a couple of year period, for spending some of that, and the remainder a couple of years after that, and an issuance of the rest of the bonds, all within the context of this total of 20.8, with a .88 mil average, so that we can be looking at years four, five, six, and seven to replace cycles, replace devices. We don't know what the devices will be at that time. They may be more alike, they may be a little bit different, the price points may be very different. They may have gone up. So we can have a more up-to-date device, because we can't buy devices in the first year and say, it's got to last 10 years. Okay? We are looking at a second generation of devices for the students, second generation of replacing laptops for the teachers in their classroom, second generations of projectors in the classrooms. We've installed those through foundation and Dow Chemical money, and we have one in every classroom now, but they're not going to last 10 years. We're going to need to keep those recycled so that we can provide a consistent presence of this technology and use of this technology by our students over that period of time and not just feel that way for two, three, four years, and then we're limping along just trying to patch things up. As I pointed out before, it provides relief to the general fund for capital expenditures, and it provides a fleet of devices for smarter balance, online testing required by MDE, starting with 2004 and '15. This tech bond proposal is, for us, pretty well timed, because in 2014 and 2014-'15 school year, all testing is going to be online for students in all the subject areas that they are testing. Okay?
And the required tests.
In the required tests, yes. But the point being is that, right now, and we're going to be doing a prototype of the testing in some of our schools, we're going to need to try to schedule all of our students in a particular grade level for a particular test that can take a couple, two, three hours through a computer lab that might be available, or computer labs that might be available, and the hazard of that as well is the classes that were scheduled, which are sometimes very particular to a course, they're not going to be able to do those courses during the period of time that we're cycling those students through. So we know for a fact that the tablets that we are looking at will be consistent with the smarter balance online testing, so students can do it at their desk with their own device. Okay? We, as we have gone along and we've planned, we are trying to make sure that it is completely compatible with whatever future district initiatives we may consider, those that are on horizon, that there have been discussions about, new tech, PYP, MYP, because we don't want this initiative to restrict what other initiatives we may be able to do. That wouldn't be fair. Okay. Question's been brought up about BYOD. That's Bring Your Own Device, okay? Bring Your Own Device is a concept that has been used in some schools, usually in a basis of providing the opportunity for some kids to bring in their smartphones, iPods, tablets if they have them, so that they can use that as an extra resource, but not very often is it successfully implemented with, in the context of every kid will have access to that device to do the assignments in class, or the work in class, or the collaboration in class, because across all these devices, the only common thing really is the opportunity to use a browser, but the apps are different, et cetera. The, and here's, for somebody who's worked at an at-risk school, this is a big thing to me, our future is going to be, if we do not provide consistent access to technology in the schools, there will be kids that will become the technology have-nots and those that will be the haves. The future for our kids, when they leave middle and public schools, is going to rest partly on their ability to use technology as a tool for continued learning. And so we need to make sure that all have access. Many of our kids will go home to rooms that will have a desktop computer, et cetera, but we do have those out there that don't. And even in those cases that we do sometimes, it's not always they don't have access geographically or because of home budgets or whatever, do not have access to Internet. Having a computer and having the Internet are not exactly the same thing, obviously. So we will still need to provide a device if we do not want to exacerbate the concept of technology have-nots and technology haves. As you all know, and this is what you, the reason you ran for the board, we are about making decisions for all kids. So the consistency also allows teacher to develop a mobile skill set. Okay, we have common device, common apps, or common applications. We can concentrate on those, rather than, especially if you have some teachers who are not quite as advanced as the others, trying to learn apps or applications or how to operate devices that are six or seven different devices in a classroom, and then some students may be without some. Lesson plans can be targeted to the device or app. I know a few of our board members had a chance to visit out at Chestnut Hill when we took you on a tour. The fifth graders were so proud to show you what they were doing in that class, but noticed that they all had common apps within their classroom that were a grade level appropriate and for the content they had, and it was the commonality of those apps that allowed the teacher and student to effectively and efficaciously share their learning, their knowledge, et cetera. Comfort level for teachers and students, knowing that we have a common device, not knowing what the other device is like. The world of iOS is very different than the world of Android and other things, and, you know, there are some people that need to concentrate on the one device because they don't have that broad depth of experience. And for peer support, one of the things that we saw, I think, out at Chestnut Hill the other day is the teachers and, the students are not just the learners, they're the teachers. They're showing the other kids how to use the apps, they're showing the teachers how to use some of these apps, they're sharing what they've learned. That is very important, and it's much more efficient if we have a common device. And quite honestly, with BYOD, it's not very practical for elementary and middle school students. Not many of them have phones with wireless or a data pack. Okay? A lot of parents don't feel comfortable necessarily with that at an elementary level or a middle grades level. Secondly, stop and think. We may have some families who may be challenged in these tough times and have three kids in the school. Okay, needing to provide three devices for that family is very different than to provide for one. Okay. The other things to know about BYOD, district-issue Wi-Fi devices can be filtered. Okay, one of the things that we've heard most from parents in one-on-one conversations about the iPad initiative is what made them feel the most comfortable and was a point of questioning at the beginning is the fact that we can filter these through a proxy. So the kids' devices are filtered outside of the building the same as if they were inside of our buildings. Okay? 3G, 4G cellular devices can't be filtered, and some kids may come in with data packs and 3G and 4G devices, but they could be interacting and sharing things with other students, but we have no control of that. Supportability, we need to understand that we have multiple platforms, especially when you're talking about phones, tablets, iPads, et cetera. We're going to need more resources for that. Help desk, MDM, building support, because you need to have some people with experience within the building, and we started to build that with the iPad initiative, who can help rather than putting in an order or a ticket and hope that somebody can help you in a day or two. And with a BYOD approach, each student then is responsible for maintenance and repairs. And I know you probably all have experienced this, phone's not working right, or you drop it, you crack the screen. Those parents would need, if we're not providing a device, they're going to need to do that. Sometimes that can be a real delay, because as we quite well know, some of those damages can be pretty expensive. Okay. So which device is best for MPS in this tech bond? Good question. No final decision has been made. We have been looking at all kinds of devices, researching them. We have prototypes of some of these in here. We've used them for a period of time. We look at whether they meet our needs. They look at, we look at the specifications and see what is compatible with different types of programs we might use, different type of initiatives we may want to go forward with, and no final decision has been made because we've always left open that it may not be the same device all the way K through 12. Maybe, just for an example, a tablet at the high schools, and we may find through our iPad initiative and other things, that a mini tablet might serve some of the younger kids better. It'll be the same across grade levels and probably, you know, just school levels, but it could be different at another level. We're going to continue to watch what the developments are before we make the final decisions and start deploying, and quite honestly, there'll be different tablets come out, different versions and capabilities just here in the spring. So we want to keep an eye on that. Also, this tech bond proposal is fresh, it is fresh in our mind that if we find funding sources within the community to do a new tech, then new tech relies on a laptop model. Okay? Doesn't mean that you have to have a laptop K through 12 or all secondary, but in the context of those eventual 400 kids, that that suits the needs because of the specifics of the ecosystem through new tech, et cetera. Now, the request for that funding for the new tech does include the funds for purchasing of laptops, but we can't be naive enough to think that those things will last 10 years. So this tech bond proposal has built in, after those start to get older, a refresh of those at the end cycle of this eight-to-10-year period. Okay? So it is built so that it can be consistent with new tech, but secondly, so that it can support it after those monies that we may get eventually through the generosity of our community, that we would be able to keep it and sustain it, which goes back to the first slide. We must be cost-effective here. The prices between, and the devices can really vary. But to give you the general range, the iPad, depending on whether you're going with 16 gigabytes Wi-Fi, or you're going up to 128 gig, those prices can vary. Right now, we're using the 16 gig and just Wi-Fi, no cellular, which is the entry level, and it's serving us fine. We had, we've had no problems with that, and, but you could go top of the line and go up to $799. MacBook Pro Air has a little bit better battery life than a lot of the other laptops, but those run from $999 to $1199, and that's a quite different price. And we have on here the $829 for the HP 6570B, which is our standard-issue laptop that we are currently using, if we were to go further with that and use that with students or new tech or whatever the case may be. That decision to be made. So you need to understand, we have reached out over the course of this whole semester to some of our stakeholders, our teachers in our classrooms, okay? We went around, we obviously had these very open conversations with the elementary teachers who have been a part of this iPad initiative, and we've shared that conversation with others within our elementary. But in our secondaries, we did, at each building, a meeting and an all-call for anybody who wanted to have their voice heard about the future of technology, and if we were able to go with a tech bond, okay, what is it that they want? And we're not looking at the name of a product or how many gigabytes or anything like that, but we're looking at this as to, okay, give us some direction as to what's going to meet the needs of the kids and you in your classroom. And we started out with the question is, what is it the kids need to do? Okay? What kind of device would help them do it? And what are the things that we have to keep in mind as we make these decisions going forward to make that experience a wonderful instructional experience in the classroom? And it's amazing, five separate meetings at our secondaries, all done, we collected all the notes, Chris made sure he got it all, they all agreed on the same themes, and when you compare the five, pretty much consensus. And it is that whatever device is used for the student should be the same as the teacher device. It should be mobile and easy to use. It should have a longer battery life, as they're concerned about it making it to the end of a day, and the, you know, you could look at, well, you could recharge some of those power strips, extension cords. That's not very practical with 25 kids in a classroom and across all classrooms in the district, okay? It's got to be consistent for all students. That came through loudly and clearly. Lightweight and durable, okay? When we're talking about durable, the iPad initiative, that's been a wonderful experience with our Garmin military-grade protector on it. We have had two iPads that have been damaged. One, the screen, it was a fluke accident, the screen was cracked, and then the other one, one of the earbud connectors broke off inside, and we were able to fix that. But that's been the extent, after these eight weeks of using in the classroom and letting kids take them home, that's been the extent of it. And we've also, with that one cracked one, we wanted to see how well this would hold up, and so Chris and Blake had the, we couldn't repair that one, so they had the fun of tossing it all around the parking lot outside, seeing what it would take to break it, and they came, they came back in pretty worn out. Okay? Has to have a small footprint. One of the things that we know about some of the laptops is they're so big that it takes up your desk. Okay, where do you put anything else? Teachers have said it needs to be cost-effective, and there needs to be flexibility for individualized learning. And I think we saw some of that on some of the board members out at Chestnut Hill yesterday. And they really think that there's value in having a device that can replace all the other devices that we have, okay? Which have been exciting multimedia opportunities for students, for annotating documents. We have the interactive whiteboards, which we've used in the past, but those are stationary, and they can be bulky and only one person can be at it at a time. We have the document cameras. Tablets are a document camera. Audience response system. The tablet is an audio response system. We saw examples of that over at Chestnut Hill. Video and voice recording, but one strong message from all the staff is they want it to support, be supported by smarter balance assessments. Okay. Which email service is required for new tech? That issue has come up. And this is the technology requirements and recommendations for the ECHO New Tech Network. And I know that that box at the bottom there is hard to read, we just wanted to show the full document. And basically, it says you need to establish a mail domain for your staff and students that meets the following criteria. It should be unique to the school, so if you have a new tech school, you could have our domain be, we have MPS k12.mi.us. We could have it be MPS new tech for these particular kids that are in that program, no problem. The mail domain must be the same for staff and students. We can do that very easily, even with our exchange program. But most importantly, new tech's document there shows us is to determine whether your school will use Google Apps Mail for staff and students. Now, for clarification, Google Apps is sort of a suite of different applications, okay, which could include Google Docs, Google Gmail. The whole suite is actually called Vault, if you get the full one, where you can maintain the security on your own, archive, et cetera. But if you decide not to use Google Apps Mail and use district-provided mail, ensure that these mail accounts use the same unique domain as described above. It's not prescribed. In fact, actually, when we had the conversation with Paul Buck and some of his senior people over there, new tech uses Exchange for their email. Okay? But the Google Apps is preferred by new tech because it's collaborative. There are other possibilities. Within our own office suite, we have SharePoint, that could be possible, but Google Apps is not a problem. You don't have to have Gmail to use the Google Apps. I know I've got accounts with Google Apps. Other teachers here in the district have that. That is the key point here, is that to be able to be collaborative through that Google Apps, and that's mainly what new tech is getting at, not necessarily that we have one Gmail service and then have to provide it to all students and all staff. Especially if we go to Gmail, we would have to change, we would not have control over securing that. So let's go over again, we showed you some of this in percentages last time, but what's included in the tech bond proposal? This is basically it, and it's broad categories. Infrastructure and security, okay? Not a very sexy title, obviously, but what it does is- Not a very sexy title, obviously, but what it does is that security technology we talked to you about, wireless refresh, okay? The routers that we have in our buildings that we've just put in, thanks to donations from our community. We can't count necessarily that those specs and those devices are going to hold up through ten years. The worst thing that can happen is we've got the devices holding up, but we can't get the wireless access, okay? So we want to make sure that we stay up on this. We have some network electronics. We're also trying to make some changes in how our fiber setup, set up a few loops so that we're not vulnerable, that if at a certain school, there's a problem with the line, we can reroute and continue on with business. Very important, especially when you're going to become so dependent upon that on an hour by hour basis, okay? Classroom multimedia. What this boils down to is in every classroom, we will have the projectors, similar to what we have up here. We have them in all the classrooms now, but we'll need to keep replacing or refreshing them. An Apple TV, which is a small box, or something like Apple TV, small box that's connected there, it's got HDMI cables, and it allows us, without a TV screen or anything, to wirelessly take my presentation here, if it was on the tablet, project it onto here and show it to you. And if Scott wanted to show me something similar that he's found on it, we can just switch over and Scott's can go up there wirelessly from an iPad if he had one, just as an example, okay? We realize that there are going to be some specialized needs for desktops or laptops with some of our programs, graphic arts, okay? Actually, we need to upgrade that because right now, we're kind of a baseline on power there. So we're, that's built into this, CAD labs, we've got some of the web design labs, we're going to need to update and still keep those. Teacher devices, they're going to have a laptop and a tablet. They already have the laptops, but we'll continue into another generation there. They will have the same devices as the students, and I'm sure you can appreciate how critical that is. Students will have the mobile device for every K through twelve student. If we have new tech, they would have laptops, but we are providing in the funding here for a refresh at the very end of the cycle here, so that we don't get caught not being able to sustain that, okay? And then contingency and professional services, we've had already legal representation, financial consultants. We need to get the bonds sold. We have design services, a whole variety of things. We need to, you know, have all the RFPs, we need to spec, specifications through our consultant here. We need to do all the accounting that's available with this, and that's all part of that grand total. So it adds up to twenty million, eight hundred thousand dollars. We believe it provides an exciting new opportunity for students in a very powerful way to increase instruction and build some sustainability over a period of the next eight to ten years. And lastly, also not have us be constricted by all the pressures on the general fund that we have seen and having to implement year by year by year by year. And then when we get further along, we've got to change plans because the technology has changed. It seems to be more forward thinking, at least in our mind.
Questions for Mr. Verlinde?
Yes. Mr. Verlinde, about two years ago, the board policy allowed for bring your own device, use your own device in classes. I think at the time, Mr. Sobel wasn't here yet, Mr. Sabrin was handling that. How do we, how do we come up with a way, since these devices are in many places? You know, the limitations of which you outlined and illustrated. So we've had that for about a year, year and a half. I haven't heard that they're being used on a prolific grade level for those reasons.
Quite honestly, and I think Chris might be able to address this as well. Quite honestly, that was a change, that was a change in our policy. We didn't allow any of those devices to be used, phones, et cetera, okay? We tried to allow that in certain circumstances with approval of the teacher and the principal in specific activities at a grade level for a specific purpose. So it was an opportunity to try out some of this in limited activities. And so in some cases, student, teachers had their students bring their phones in, and they use it as a clicker or audience response type of thing. Very limited, but it was a good way of demonstrating for that particular activity. But again, we ran into a situation, there were kids who didn't have phones to bring in.
Exactly.
Okay, and then they had design instruction that either they shared a phone together or looked over each other's shoulders, or there was an alternate way of doing this. So we've done it in a limited manner, but what we did when we changed the policy is allow that experimentation and those opportunities, but not, I think your point's exactly right, not in a very prolific manner.
And it didn't seem like it had the potential. I'm sure, Blake, you would have identified if that had greater potential, but it didn't really materialize as far as being something that took off and allowed for that to happen in classrooms on a very large scale, thus the reason for the one-to-one study and recommendation, if I understand that correctly. Because I think we've kind of tiptoed and tested the waters as we've gone along. And so I just wanted to bring that up to the public, that we've, we've tested that and surveyed that, what it would do in the district.
Any other questions or concerns for Gary?
Say, "Well done." Absolutely great job.
It was a pleasure.
Very well done.
It's been a, definitely a multi-month, if not multi-year effort. It's got well-defined scope of what we're trying to do, yet flexibility in terms of not anchoring into a device, especially for application in terms of new tech, or especially high school classes and things of that nature. So that's perfect. Okay, if there are no further questions on the presentation, I'll turn it back over to Mr. Allinger for moving to the next part of our agenda.
Yeah, just before we actually get to the technology and the sinking fund resolution, just some introductory comments. This board has had discussion, in particular through the Finance Facilities and Operations Study Committee of the Board, for I would say the better part of two years. That's a committee that Linda provides oversight for and works with whoever the treasurer of the board is at the time, and it happens to be Angela this year. So our recommendation to you tonight, and this isn't a surprise to any of our board members, is that after getting approval from the Department of Treasury that we got officially last week, it's necessary to take action tonight, given the timelines that we have to have for proper election notification and development of the ballot language and so on. And you have a copy of that at your places, and I think we sent it to you electronically. It's important that we take this action tonight because we only have about a week in which we can take that action. I want you to know, however, that at the recommendation of the FFO, we just didn't pick this May two thousand thirteen election date out of the blue, because there are other options. In the change in the election law, you can hold an election in February, March, August, and November. But there's good reasons that we're asking the board to consider this for this May, and that has to do, when you look at other millages that are coming due in the future, both for our district and the county, because we will have to ask the voters for what school districts typically do all over the state of Michigan to renew their operational millage. That is an election. Because we're a whole harmless district, and that would cost us quite a bit of income, Linda can probably quote the amount, that election is facing us within the next couple of years as well. There is a countywide enhancement election that we're in, I believe the fourth year of. And there's been no decisions made, I think, by the local boards or the ESA, but will there be a continuation of that, and where does that fit into the timeline? So I think the longer we delay giving some, what would really be considerable relief to our general fund, both for capital investments in the district from having another ten-year sinking fund at the same millage that that ten-year sinking fund has been for the past ten years, up until the winter tax collections of this year. To extend that out for another ten years becomes a little less burdensome, or it's not like a new tax on the voters because they're used to paying for that in some fashion. Without the investment that this board used to have of a million to two million a year in a reserve to take care of capital funds, we're in serious problems. So I think our community understands the urgency of that. The second thing is with the technology bond, that instantly gives relief to the, to the general fund with another source for those expenditures. And it certainly isn't going to be our recommendation that that savings in the general fund go into expenditures because we really have to mind our Ps and Qs as we prepare for the budget challenges that we still face as a district. So I would ask you to keep in mind that I think it's important, it's not just my recommendation to you that we hold this election in May, that's coming from the previous board after months, if not two years, of study and the timing of when we should approach our community for the timing of this election. And I just want to say publicly that I know a number of us at this table, given the financial challenges that we've gone through in recent years, have had committee members approach us saying, "Mr. Allinger, some of us are frustrated by funding for public education at the state level as many local school districts are." We are one of those districts that I think has heard the message from our community that is probably considered a fiscally conservative one. And we have not increased wages for our staff hardly at all in my six years of being here. They have paid more for their benefit package. We, I think, are one of those lighthouse districts that the legislature would say, given our reduction in revenue, we have had to make some of the tough choices, even when, even when it comes to salary and benefits, and how we have to make tough decisions from privatizing services to reductions of some programs, and you all know what they are. I think we're a district that the state would say, "This district has done its job to come to grips with what a lot of businesses in this state are coming to grips with, and that's a tough economic climate." But it's going to get more difficult to find reductions in savings in the general fund if we don't have millages like this that help with the revenue. And what I and a number of you are hearing from the community is, we can't impact this on a statewide level, but Mr. Allinger, why doesn't the board, why don't you recommend to the board that you come to us locally and let us do what we can? And the community would have a strong voice in telling us if they support these two proposals that we would suggest you have on, on the May election. We've also had a survey, that we did the Cobalt survey, that was really the most comprehensive survey that we have done as a district in probably a decade or more. That survey came back with very strong support, in some places over fifty percent, in a lot of places forty-nine or fifty. When we had that company review the survey results with us here, with a little bit more information and things like the sinking fund and investment in a new tech program, there was references to a pool and so on that could, could be addressed in this sinking fund, improvements to the pool. With just a little more information in a lot of these areas, two-thirds of the respondents on this survey said that they want the opportunity to weigh in and hopefully lend us their support. So I don't think we bring this recommendation to you in any lighthearted manner. I think we've done our homework. I think we've engaged our community, and we can demonstrate that. So as we move into these resolutions, I just wanted to remind all of you in our community of the homework that we've done to prepare for this.
Thanks, Carl. You've stolen a lot of my thunder for the comment period. So, no, it's great.
Better on the front end.
Probably more succinct than I could do. And from a process standpoint, what we do now is ask for motions for a resolution. We'd have John read the resolution, and then we can have discussion about that resolution and move on to a vote. So I'll entertain a motion for a resolution for a technology bond.
I make a motion that we have a resolution for a technology bond.
Moved by Treasurer Branstad and supported by Member McFarland?
Yes.
So we have a motion and a second. And John, would you please read the resolution?
Sure. A special meeting of the Board of Education, the board of the district, was held at the Administration Center Boardroom in the district on this twentieth day of February two thousand thirteen at five thirty PM in the evening. The meeting was called to order by Jerry Wasserman, Board President. Members present was Member Baker, Branstad, Gordon, Kaminsky, McFarland, Mandercallen, and Wasserman. The following preamble and resolution were offered by Member Branstad and supported by Member McFarland. Got that right, on my feet. Whereas, number one, in the opinion of this board, it is necessary and expedient to acquire and install instructional technology for school facilities, remodel and equip and re-equip school facilities for technology purposes, and develop and improve sites for technology purposes. And number two, this board estimates the necessary cost of this project to be twenty million, nine hundred eleven thousand, five hundred and one dollars. And number three, it will be necessary for the district to borrow the sum of twenty million, eight hundred eighty thousand dollars and to issue the bonds of the district, therefore, the remaining funds to be derived from the investment of the bonds proceeds. And number four, the bond, the board intends to submit one proposition at a special election to be held on Tuesday, May seventh, two thousand thirteen. And number five, honored before four PM on Tuesday, February twenty-sixth, two thousand thirteen, the board shall certify any ballot proposition to be submitted to the voters at such election to the election coordinator or coordinators designated to conduct elections within the district, quote, "the election coordinator." Now, therefore, it be resolved that, number one, a special election of the electors of the district be called and held on Tuesday, May seventh, two thousand thirteen. The proposition to be voted on at this special election shall be stated on the ballots in substantially the form as set forth in Exhibit A. Number three, the election coordinator is requested to, A, utilize Middle and Daily News, a newspaper published of a general circulation within the district for publication of notices in accordance with election law requirements. Three B, utilize ballot proposition summary information as prepared by legal counsel in the form of this notice on the last day of registration and notice of election in the form as set forth in Exhibit B attached here, too. Three C, provide a proof copy of the ballot to the district and its legal counsel in sufficient time to allow the ballot to be proofread prior to printing. Number four, this board estimates the period of usefulness of the improvements for the bonds of the district and the amount of twenty million, eight hundred eighty thousand dollars are to be issued to be not less than eight years. Number five, the Secretary of the Board is hereby authorized to direct and file a copy of this resolution with the election coordinator and with any election clerk or clerks designated to conduct elections within the district by four PM on Tuesday, February sixth, two thousand thirteen. And number six, all resolutions and parts of resolutions, insofar as they conflict with the provisions of this resolution, be and same are hereby rescinded. And I believe we have a roll call vote?
Just one clarification in number five, that should have read February twenty-sixth, not sixth. Just to clarify.
Oh, okay. Oh, I thought you said twenty-six, actually.
I think he said. We'll clarify, February twenty-sixth for item number five.
Thank you. I thought it was two-sixths, okay. Resolution's been read, questions or comments? None?
I was going to say, I had some comments, but you all pretty much expressed my same feelings on why this is important and what it can do for the general budget, and that timing is of the essence right now to do it now, so that as we go into our budget planning for even next year, if we know that this is in place, it will be a different approach to budget planning for the next school year even.
Any others?
I do have some comments. I was, Mr. Verlinde, it was interesting how you took us from the beginning with, when we looked at our technology plan. The plan that we have now looks a lot different than when I came in the district, and that was one of my goals coming in as a board member. And I remember when Mr. Sabrin, you were trying to get this plan together, and this is before Mr. Sobel came on as our technology director and consultant. And so it's just really come a long way. I'm impressed with how the administration's done the homework, looking at developing the plan, looking at polling the public with Cobalt survey, you know, really looking at doing the iPad initiative to try to find out not just what that shiny new technology is, but to actually test the waters, see not just how can that be used in education, but to test it in this district and find out, how is it a good fit for us? How is it a good fit as far as the apps? And be realistic, give it some soak time and so forth, and so I really appreciate that. I like the emphasis on security, I like the emphasis on having the input from families and teachers about filtering some of the devices and also some of the compatibilities going forward. I really like that. And then also in the tech bond, the emphasis on security for the schools. If we can reinforce using technology solutions, because obviously, we have less resources to do that. Technology tends to be, once it's implemented, an efficient way to do things, monitor security and so forth in our buildings. So I think that that's really important. I like the piece on sustainability, too, in the replacement part. I think it's really well thought through, so I really appreciate all the work that went into this. It makes our decision sort of easy in a way. Thank you.
Any others? I'll make a quick one. Ditto to everything said by, by John, Gary, and Carl. It, I think it's a great plan, it's got flexibility, as I said earlier, yet we know where we're headed. And it's going to enable us to move into twenty-first century education, which I know is a buzzword, but, but it's going to allow new delivery ways, either more effective delivery or more efficient delivery of education as we go forward. delivery or more efficient delivery of education as we go forward. And that, that's, that's perfect as, as the world turns from chalkboards to going forward. That said, I don't take it lightly that we are asking the taxpayers for these dollars, and I'll repeat this when we get to the sinking fund. I hope the electorate appreciates that we have been good stewards in the past, that when Vatican times came and we needed operating funds, we asked for those, but we relieved on the, on the other side with the sinking fund, and we recognized the situation that we'd be putting families into and businesses into in terms of taxation. This is now going to be additional taxes, additional payments. They're not that large, they'll be considered large by some and not by others, but the bang for the buck we're going to get in terms of moving education forward in Midland and where our community, as Carl said, has been saying, "Please find us a way to help. Please give us the opportunity to say yes or no to moving forward." And so we're now presenting that electorate that choice, and I hope we've earned your trust that we have a great plan, that we've managed it well in the past, and we'll manage it in the forward, and when we look back a decade from now, our kids will have had a heck of an experience, a world competitive experience in education in Midland Public Schools.
Okay. That said, we'll move into a roll call vote. Mr. Secretary.
Okay. President Wasserman?
Yes.
Vice President Baker?
Yes.
Secretary Kaminsky? Yes. Treasurer Branstad?
Yes.
Member Gordon?
Yes.
Member McFarland?
Yes.
Member Vanderkellen?
Yes.
Very good. 7-0. Thank you. Forward, and hopefully we can say thank you to the taxpayers in May. So we look forward to seeing you, taxpayers, and questions you have, please ask questions as we go forward, and, and we'll be glad to answer those as we go forward.
Carl, I'll turn it over to the sinking, sinking fund.
You can read the resolution. I mean, I would just be repeating the rationale for why we think the timing and, and the reason for it was previously stated, so...
Mr. Secretary.
Okay. I think we have a shorter one this time, so, okay. So, a special meeting of the Board of Education, the Board of the District, was held in the Administration Boardroom in the district, the 20th day of February 2013 at 5:30 PM. Meeting was called to order by President Jerry Wasserman. Members present, Members Baker, Branstad, Gordon, Kaminsky, McFarland, Vanderkellen, and Wasserman. The following preamble and resolution were offered by Member, I don't know if we had a motion?
I'm sorry, we do have to...
All right.
I'm sorry, thank you. We'll start with the... I apologize. Can I have a motion to entertain a resolution for a sinking fund millage?
So moved.
Support.
Member McFarland has moved, and Treasurer Branstad has supported. Please now read the resolution.
Yeah, that's, that's why these blanks, and that's why everything is in there to make sure that...
Thank you. I apologize.
You could start where you left off.
Yes, so we'll resume, we're reading the following preamble and resolution, were offered by Member, I think, McFarland, and supported by Member Branstad. Whereas, number one, the board intends to submit one additional proposition at a special election to be held on Tuesday, May 7, 2013. And number two, honored before 4:00 PM on Tuesday, February 26, 2013, the board shall certify any ballot proposition to be submitted to the voters at such election to the election coordinator or coordinators designated to conduct elections within the district, quote, "the election coordinator." Now therefore be resolved that, number one, a special election of the electors of the district be called and be held on Tuesday, May 7, 2013. Number two, the additional proposition to be voted on at the special election shall be stated on the ballots and substantially the form as set forth in Exhibit A, with that proposition to be listed second on the ballot to the district's bonds proposition. Number three, the election coordinator is requested to, number one, utilize Midland Daily News, a newspaper published or, or a general circulation within the district for publication of notices in accordance with the election law requirements. Number two, utilize ballot proposition summary information as prepared by legal counsel in the form of the notice of the last day of the registration and notice of election in the form as set forth in Exhibit B attached here, too. Number three, provide a proof copy of the ballot to the district and its legal counsel in sufficient time to allow the ballot to be proofread prior to printing. Number four, the Secretary of this Board is hereby authorized and directed to file a copy of this resolution with the election coordinator and with any election clerk or clerks designated to conduct elections within the district by 4:00 PM on Tuesday, February 26, 2013. Number six, all resolutions and part of resolutions insofar as they conflict with provisions of this resolution, B and the same, are hereby rescinded.
That said, resolution. Comments? Questions? Discussion?
I do have some comments.
Since there are no others...
Yes. Press on. I don't want to be a one-man show here, or one-woman show. So, you know, with the sinking fund, you know, I'm keeping in mind with this is that the buildings are definitely older, there is a requirement, I think it's cheaper than building new buildings, I think we've brought that up in FFO, the, the enormous cost of building new buildings versus maintaining what we have, and I keep in mind that the necessary getting this to the voters. I think of this as also with the new tech part, science lab renovations, the new tech potential help from that, looking at 21st century, Mr. Wasserman recommend, or mentioned that, and I thought that that was important. I think that, you know, also looking at the Cobalt survey that was done, I think that the support was definitely there with continuing to improve the district, I think it's responsible. And I, and also, my thoughts were is we have exercised restraint on not funding or asking for the full amount, which I think is very sensitive. And, and just kind of in the summary, looking at the tech bond and the sinking fund, this is a chance for Midland to bring the spoon to their own mouths and be able to help out, and it doesn't necessarily relate to Lansing helping, giving us funds, and I think that this is a real, it's a great opportunity for us to bring this to the voters, this is how we can improve not just technology, but also sinking fund, and continue to keep up our standard that we're used to with education. So I just think this, this is our opportunity, and I hope we, I hope we make something of it.
If I could add, I know we went through the whole technology and where all the money was going to go, and the same process, just for anyone who hasn't realized this, was done for the sinking fund. So the amount was just not arbitrarily arrived at, so there's, you know, it was a well-thought-out process in how it came up with two mills.
And from our meeting, when just last Monday was it? There's a PowerPoint on the sinking fund, too, for anyone watching on TV or in the audience, if they want to review that, they can see the major areas that the sinking fund would address in our facilities throughout the district, so just as an FYI.
Yep. And again, I'll add thank you to the taxpayers for the last decade of support, and there's been a small gap in here on purpose to facilitate the plans of what we have to do with our facilities, with technology and integrating that and new ways of delivering education like new tech, and having all that dust settle so we knew where we were going versus asking for money and just continuing spending to spend. The other, the other thing I'd like to point out, and it was already pointed out, the age of our buildings, this is a much more capital-efficient way of keeping our facilities, not only with good mechanical integrity, but also enhancing security in buildings that were designed not with security in mind at all in their days. Remember, they, it's been back in 1968, and I don't think people were worried about things with weapons in schools in 1968, and this will help us deal with those issues. Lastly, the vast majority of this money, just like the last sinking fund, is, you know, the old joke, the teeth are great, but the gums are going, we're spending money on gums. A lot of this is infrastructure things that, yeah, while somewhat visible, not necessarily visible, to keep the buildings from leaking, to keep the energy costs down, that provide adequate lighting, those kind of things, that's the vast majority of the money. And then the rest of the money, as Angela pointed out, are almost equally divided between sciences, arts and drama, athletics, swimming, and I've lost one in my head here, that are pretty much evenly distributed, just sort of seen last night, or last week in the presentation. So I feel good that, again, just like technology, when you look, I always try to make these decisions of what am I going to look back on a decade from now? And I sit there and go, this now will have, still have great facilities a decade from now. We wouldn't have spent a lot of taxpayer money on a new facility or new facilities as we're going forward, and it's a very capital-efficient way. As this works out, Linda, if I'm not mistaken, into somewhere, call it 2-ish percent, a little less or a little more than 2% of our replacement asset base of our buildings, it's a very small continuing reinvestment to keep these things alive over a decade, so it's a very efficient way, and I hope our taxpayers will support us in doing so.
That said, we can move into a roll call vote.
Okay, very good. President Wasserman?
Yes.
Vice President Baker?
Yes.
Secretary Kaminsky? Yes. Treasurer Branstad?
Yes.
Member Gordon?
Yes.
Member McFarland?
Yes.
And Member Vanderkellen?
Yes.
Very good.
7-0 on the sinking fund.
Thank you very much, board members, and again, thank you, thanking the past to the taxpayers and looking forward to being able to thank you in May for the future funding. That ends the formal part of the agenda. I would open up for any comments from the good of the order. Seeing none, we stand adjourned.